Good evening. We were just in executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the MTA if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body pursuant to MGL, what is it? Chapter 30A, Sections 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual in reference to November 26, 2018, open meeting law complaint. At this point, we'll have time for public input. Anyone? All righty. And we'll move on to the approval of minutes. However, I am suggesting that we table these minutes in relation to the complaints that we have received regarding open meeting laws that we have time to discuss with council. Going forward, I think we need to be very mindful of how we roll out our minutes so we're really dotting our i's, crossing our t's. So if we could please table these. Do we have them? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you. And high school student advisory updates. Yay.
Who's first?
Who's going up?
Hi, I'm Carrie White, the representative for the class of 2022. The freshmen are definitely more used to the high school now that term one is already over. We just got to experience our first pep rally and it was super fun and from what I've heard, a lot of the ninth graders loved it. Winter sports are starting up and again, lots of freshmen have signed up and tried out. And we are thinking of selling class gear to start making money for prom even though it's pretty far away. But student government is working hard to make and sell the gear before Christmas break. We are also thinking of selling blankets or something that the parents would be interested in. And you wanted me to talk about homework last time?
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
So the homework in high school is definitely a lot heavier than the amount of homework we had in middle school. So maybe if we had more homework in middle school than it would have prepared us for the amount that is given now in high school because it is generally a pretty big change. And for standards-based reporting in middle school, I know that a lot of my grade didn't really like it because they only had one, two, and three. And people weren't as motivated to study and look back at tests because they, I guess, weren't getting like a real grade. It also didn't really prepare us for the amount of studying we need to do now in high school. And that's pretty much all that's up with the freshman class. Thank you and happy holidays.
Oh Carrie, sorry, one question. Thank you very, very much because it was going to be a question. So thank you for preempting that. So in terms of the standard-based grading, and I've spoken to, my daughter's a freshman as well, and I've heard similar comments. But did you feel that the comments you received, you know how it kind of broke things down? Did you feel that after reviewing those, you got better feedback versus just a grade because then it was broken down into categories?
Yeah, I think definitely the feedback was better, but just like overall, I think people didn't, yeah.
Conceptual idea?
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting, fascinating. Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Eliza Varr and I'm the representative to school committee for the class of 2021. Since our last meeting, the student government has designed two sweatshirts and sweatpants for class gear. We have sent out order forms yesterday and so far, a lot of people have ordered. Their sheets are due by end of next week. Also, we have decided to start planning another way to make money for prom. 2021 student government is planning an egg hunt for little kids at the school. It would be about a $5 admission and it will be an all-day event a week before Easter. And then lastly, I have talked to kids about homework and they said that the sophomore class is following the homework role nicely and they're not too stressed, which is like pretty common because I feel like everyone says sophomore year isn't too bad compared to freshman year and junior year, so.
Yeah. So my question is, so did teachers announce it in their classes? Has there been a shift in terms of, well, actually tonight, based on the homework policy, where I'm only going to give three math problems versus 15 or in that respect?
Well, typically in math class, I, Mr. Cassidy, what he does is he makes us have like a big sheet, but then he makes us circle problems we have to do for homework so we don't have to do all of it. But then he says if we want to do all of it for extra practice, we can. So it's kind of like that in some classes.
All righty. Cool. Thank you, Eliza.
Thanks, Eliza.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Campbell Air. I'm the rep for the school committee for the class of 2020. So this week, the student government for the class of 2020 received the orders for our catalog fundraiser and we will be delivering the orders throughout this week. The funds raised will be used for future payments of prom and as well as many senior events. On Friday, the senior class hosted the winter dance and they paid our student government $500 to help set up and clean up the event, which was greatly appreciated because we're really in the need for funds. Junior year is a big, like, year for searching for those funds. From what I heard, the junior class really enjoyed the prom. It sounded like everybody had a good Friday night. Over the weekend, many juniors, including myself, took the SAT. So it's been a little bit of a stressful time for juniors, kind of getting used to that, incorporating SAT work into school work. But it seems like everybody's doing fine with it and adapting. And like they mentioned earlier, the last meeting, you asked us about homework. Has it been increasing or decreasing personally and through what I've heard from my friends? It's definitely seemed to be decreasing in some classes like English, less reading assignments throughout the night. So it's been really helpful, especially with incorporating extracurriculars and SAT work. So, yeah. Thank you if you have any questions.
Thank you, Campbell.
Thanks, Campbell.
Super. Thank you.
I'm Peter Barrett, the representative to the school committee for the senior class. And the senior class is currently doing great. This past weekend, as Campbell mentioned, was the Christmas dance, which is a really fun event for juniors and seniors. We used a new DJ who was recommended to us from Milis. And from what I've heard, he was really well-received and everybody seemed to like him. The Angel Run was this Sunday and all of student council helped to set up and clean up the event. And that helped the event run smoothly despite the less-than-ideal weather conditions that we had that day. Before Thanksgiving was the pep rally. And this is just another great school-wide event. And the senior class really seemed to come together at the pep rally. And I think that it was one of the best that we've had in years. Overall, the grades camaraderie is very high, which I think is a great thing. For sports, the winter sports have just begun. And for most sports, tryouts occurred last week. And so by now, most teams have been selected. And finally, academically, seniors are doing well. We are obviously pretty used to the course load by now. And for me at least, and for people who I've talked to, homework feels manageable even with sports and activities. One factor adding to stress, however, is the looming regular application date for college applications coming up in a little less than a month. Other than this, though, seniors are looking forward to finishing up term two and getting on to the highly acclaimed senior spring. Yeah, that's it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Student council, you guys did fantastic for the Angel Run. Kudos. Thank you very much. Future elementary enrollment. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure this agenda item stays on for the next foreseeable future, I guess, taking a look at some of the enrollment projections we've had in the last couple of meetings. So we're looking at, I guess, through the lens of short-term, midterm, and long-term goals with this and how we're trying to, you know, focus in on the enrollment. So I guess our short-term goal at this point would be to look at adding two additional full-day kindergarten classes for next year. So that's what we're working on currently, working with Dr. Bill Zbarrow on that. And we're looking at space that is available either in the school or outside of the school, excuse me, that will work for us so that we can add those additional full-day classes. If we're able to add those classes, there'll be no lottery. Every parent, every kid that wants to be into that program should be able to get in based on what we've seen for numbers. The projections have us, you know, around 200 or so, but we have about 165 out there that have talked to us and responded back. So I know there's going to be an increase at some point. There always is, but we'll, you know, hopefully we can manage this for next year. But we have, the midterm issues really are 2021, 2122, and 2223. So really getting the space for those particular years, we're working on that. And that may be, you know, looking at additional space at a couple of buildings, frankly, not just at Memorial. And then the long-term solution really is that 3-5 school, which will open up a lot of space district-wide. It'll allow us to have Memorial as a pre-K, K building. And we've already mapped that out for MSBA so they've seen exactly what we're looking at with a pre-K, K building, how we'll be able to have all the preschool programs we want to have now that we can't have because of space. It'll allow us to have full day, allow us to have half day, it'll allow us to have a transitional program for kids that are coming out of preschool that maybe aren't ready for kindergarten, so have that transitional program, which we don't have room for right now. So all those things that we're looking for in our early childhood program, it'll allow us to do that. Then it'll allow us to have Wheelock as a 1-2 building with plenty of space there to get us through that. And then the 3-4-5 obviously will be new and built for enough students that will provide space for a long time. So that's the long-term. I mean, the real issue right now is that midterm that we're looking at is that the 2021, 2122, and then 2223 prior to the opening of the new building. Those are some real big years that will have increases, not just at Memorial, but at Wheelock too. So we're working through that. But I just want you guys to know, and I know you know that we've been working on it, excuse me, and it's, you know, the most immediate one, I think, will be in good shape for next year. We have a couple of things we'll work on. Once it's all done and once everything is secure for next year, we'll share it with the community, share it with all of you so that we know. But we're still, still working on that right now.
So you're trying to squeeze two more spaces out of Memorial?
We are, yeah.
On the second floor?
Second floor, basement, whatever we can get.
Came up the other day as we were thinking about this, perhaps we could have put a yurt in the middle.
We can winterize the gazebo, perhaps?
We could do that, too. All those are possibilities.
Also came up as a possibility.
All those are possibilities. But I think the real, the immediate goal is really to try to provide full-day kindergarten for everyone that wants it. And that's what we really want to do and still be able to provide preschool for our students, integrated preschool for our students, and make sure that we can do that. So that's the immediate and, you know, we should have a pretty good sense of that by the first of the year.
Now, is it a trend? And I'm guessing it is. Now, do more and more parents just want the full day? But there is a handful that appreciate the half day.
We'll always have the half day, sure. I mean, I think that's an option that people, you know, unless there's some change in the law where the Chapter 70 review commission and all that reform that they want to do in Chapter 70 includes full-day kindergarten in that. Right now, it isn't. Right now, it's just half-day kindergarten. So when they give us the funding for Chapter 70, it's based on half a kid in kindergarten, not a full kid. So once we get that, and who knows when that's going to happen. But right now, we, if we charge tuition, we have to offer a full, a half-day option for parents. But some parents want it. I always say the story, you know, my son went to half-day, my daughter went to full-day. It's a choice that parents make and, you know, what they, what they think is the best for their kid. But we want to keep that option available.
Jeff, and we also looking the next year out as well because as we know with the projections from the ASK and MSBA.
Right.
The next class is even one and a half, I believe, larger than the next, the previous class.
Yeah, so that's, that's that part of that midterm kind of goal, that looking at the 20 to 21, those particular classes in kindergarten that we still could, still could possibly squeeze in on that site, but we need to look at some other options there. We're looking for the same options for next year too. But, you know, we have good partnerships with some organizations in town that we may be able to get some space in, so that's what we're looking at right now. But it's, you know, it's on our radar, it'll be on our agenda for the foreseeable future as we go through. But, you know, until things are finalized, you really can't tell everybody what's going on with that. It's, we're still working on it.
It's also a good opportunity for us as a district to really be looking at where we're using space and, you know, like, I mean, it's a good, it's always a good opportunity. In crisis, there is opportunity. And so we can always be looking at where, you know, not only is these kids come in, but as they are traveling through in a group through their senior year, we're going to be looking at space over and over and over again.
Oh, there's no question.
So a full assessment of where we have space, what we can do, and where we can be flexible is always important.
I think there's one, I have it here somewhere, but there's one grade level that at some point will eclipse 300, you know, looking at that there from their projections. So fortunately, it comes in right when we're looking at finishing a new school. Again, if all that happens, we'll be in really good shape with that. But if not, then, you know, we have to have some hard discussions around modular classrooms and we have to. I mean, there's not going to be enough space to do that. I mean, I don't think anyone in this committee wants to go backwards and say we're going all half-day kindergarten. I mean, I certainly don't want to do that, but I'm sure the committee doesn't want to do that either. But, you know, that's a solution. That frees up space, but I can't imagine we want to do that for our kids, but.
I'm not sure if MAP can handle it.
No kidding.
They did Wayback One.
But these are actually bigger than Wayback One. These are, these are big numbers.
Who do we graduate this year?
The culture's changed. Sorry?
Two, last, the class of 2018, or 2018 was 225. So that is 75 bigger than, than we've ever graduated before because that was one of the largest classes, right?
Well, and as we know, that K, next year's K is going to be the next year's first grade and that K is larger, so that's why I was asking about that.
Yeah, sure.
And I know that the building project will help, but we have to, you know, there's a, there's a gap time that we need to press.
Yeah, there's those three, that 2021, 2122, and 2223, those three years are crucial, you know, because that's when, when the enrollment not just happens at Memorial, but also goes into Wheelock too.
Yep.
You know, so that's going to be critical. Again, with the building project, if that all happens, we're looking at September 2023, so. So it'll be on there. And as we have updates, I'll provide updates to you.
Thank you.
Conversation continues. Okay. Agenda attachments. So in the same vein as tabling the November 5 minutes, actually, I want to back up here. At the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference, I went to the chair session and I asked about agenda attachments. And some districts do not release them. They're, you would have to, a public, a public records request, and some do. But I think in, in the same vein as I mentioned as the November 5 minutes, in terms of being mindful of, of how we released information, just so our i's are dotted, t's are crossed, that maybe we should discuss this with council as well. And if we could please table this to the next meeting. But certainly, I would love to hear opinions. Or we can table this?
No, I'm having, I've, I've looked at several districts. I'm keeping a spreadsheet at this point. You know, none, none released before a meeting?
Right, because it's not public.
Because it's not public at that time.
Correct.
So it's some attach, but not a lot. And they are always and always have been actually available in our offices by request, you know. So I really don't, I guess I feel like it's important for us to really talk to council about specifically what the ramifications are because I don't have enough information to know.
Yes, because my gut initially was, why not? You know, what's the big deal?
Right.
But then when.
But now that the majority, the majority of the districts do not and feel so strongly about it, I think that.
Right, so, yes.
We need to figure out why that is and if we should decide to change that, why it is that Medfield, in specific, we would choose to change that.
Right.
In my experience, yeah, in my experience, I've worked in two districts that did release them and one district that did not. So, I mean, and they did them night of and it was really just so that people who attended could follow along, particularly around presentations that I actually may be giving in that, you know. So people, and then if there was comment to my presentations or whatever, they had the reference material for that, then if there was anything added or corrected, they would post it after the fact.
Right.
You know, on our website. So like I said, I'm partial. It is public. So, I mean, whatever council thinks is best practice or whatever state and other places have as best practice, I don't know if those districts still do it that way, but at the time when I worked there, that's how they did it.
No, it's fascinating, the vast, you know, some districts don't do public input during budget, which to me blew my mind, like, why wouldn't you? But, you know, they had their reasons, you know. So.
And some places, like, like I meant, I've said to other people before, I'm, I think as part of the, the community, the tighter community we live in, that we do have an open public comment sometimes.
Exactly, and I value that.
And places I've worked, we're very strict on timing for public comment and there was never any feedback from the committee.
Yeah.
So here, I thought it was a little, I don't know, I find it nicer and more humane to actually have some two-way conversation.
Conversation, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't think it's ever gotten out of hand in any of the meetings I've been to yet, so I'll show this in history.
There is. So do we have a motion to table the agenda attachment? Okay, second.
Before you vote?
Okay. But we're just tabling.
Okay.
But do you want, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't think you opened it up for public input tonight, so I just wanted to.
Oh, we did.
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But on this one in particular, I think one of the things that I've seen in a number of districts is that they do have an actual district policy around policy review and development. And that if a new policy or policy revision is going to be considered, they actually have a district policy that says when, when is it going to be available for public review before the policy is voted on. I think, I think any kind of new policy needs to be out there for the public to see before it's voted on, well in advance before the voting.
Madam Chair, if you remember, we threw that a few years ago where it's two weeks it's put on the website.
Yes.
On our website, it's old policy and then revised policy, and we've been doing that for a while.
The homework policy didn't show up until about five days before it was finally voted on.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
So getting back to whether we'd ready to table the votes.
Correct.
Specifically on how we feel about or thinking about this. Leo had a motion to table.
And do we have a second?
I second.
And are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. The Wheelock principal search.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just a brief outline and timeline of what we're going to be looking at for the Wheelock search. As you know, Donna Olson is retiring and she submitted her letter of retirement to me and I forward that on to you folks as well. So we're looking at a mid-January posting and keeping that open and probably close it in mid-February or so, looking at interviews for the week of March 4th to the 15th in those couple, in that two-week period. So that'd be interviews, site visits, anything that the committee needs to do at that point. And then looking at an appointment somewhere around the week of 3/18. So what we'll do in, you know, in the meantime is once we post that some point in July, in January, I'll send out an email to parents, ask them if they'd like to be on the search committee. And it's great to have Chris Martus around. He has done searches for superintendents and principals and he will be helping us out with that.
Okay.
So that'd be great. He'll facilitate that work for us. And, you know, we'll get it, we'll typically, what we've done in the past is have a community member, have representative from the school committee, teachers, parents, that kind of thing.
Right.
Couple administrators, same thing. We'll do the same process we've done before, so. But once that's finalized and once Chris and I sit down and map it all, the exact dates, we'll, we'll put that together in a timeline like I did with the other two searches and give it to you in a document so you have it.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Other items since posting on November 29?
I have no more, Chair.
Okay. Old business, the FY '20 budget calendar.
So I asked for this to be on just because we, we only voted to a certain point on that first meeting, but I'd like to insert something.
Okay.
Into the calendar. So we had talked about at that, at that prior meeting, if there's a way that we can get more input from families. That was some feedback that we've gotten in that there was a sense that because on the public comment, excuse me, the public hearing date at the end of January, we typically submit it to the town the very next day. So there was a sense from folks that, excuse me, that there was no real time for input when we know that we do all the work with the warrant committee the next three months after that.
Right.
So we thought it might be something, and I talked to Jess about it and I've talked to Anna May individually about it as well too, is, is if we did something like a presentation that'd be similar to the 28th, but not really what the detail of the 28th. And something that I can narrate and go over and then email that out to parents so it's not just looking at a static presentation, but with some narration and then provide us some time for feedback at that point for people prior to the 28th. So we have to map that out, but I'd like to insert that into the budget calendar so that we have, I have January 14th, 2019, release presentation slash materials for public input.
Beautiful.
I think that sounds great and probably pretty much exactly what I was looking for.
Okay.
To be able to put that information specifically in people's hands across the district, I think is really important.
So we typically, so just to review, at our next meeting, it'll be the first rendition of the FY '20 budget. And then based on your feedback, we do another rendition with any changes for the January 7th meeting. So between the January 7th and the January 28th, which is the public hearing, we'll put this out there.
Great.
All right. And then, as you, you know, and those folks that don't know, we submit that on January 29th to the town, the FY '20 budget, which is voted on by the school committee. But that is not the final budget because the final budget happens at town meeting in April, so.
Right. So we're constantly working numbers.
And working with the warrant committee and the town.
Still considering input.
Right.
But to be able to kind of front-load our input would be helpful, certainly.
Right.
Yeah. Jess, brilliant idea. I love it and I'm very grateful for it, so.
The public.
So I would ask that you would approve the budget calendar as amended and then the complete calendar will be all set to go and then revise that and we'll post that, the revised one, and give that to the warrant committee as well.
Do we have a motion?
I motion, I motion to approve the budget calendar with the amendment of January 14th, 2019, for a release of the video narration and the rest of the calendar as it's stated.
Second? Second.
Just one thing on that. It's going to be a presentation with narration, it's not going to be a video.
Thank you.
Okay. I know we'll be held to that.
Your face.
Yes. Presentation with narration on January 14th, 2019.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. As amended, aye.
Aye.
And Jeff, you had, it had come up that you might be visiting the PTO meetings?
Yes.
Will you still do that or is this in lieu of that?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to make this.
Right. Right, so what I'll do, like I typically do with MCP at their meetings, just kind of give them a quick overview of what we're doing, I'll do that tomorrow night.
Okay.
And then stop in at each school's, the KDA.
So another opportunity for people to, yeah, okay.
Provide input.
Okay.
And then the principals actually talk to the school site councils, and get feedback from them as well, so that becomes part of, you know, the budget process as well.
Great, so hopefully PTO can advertise that in terms of their communications, that would be great.
Yeah, the high-level impact, the things, the bulleted high-level impacts, so those are the earliest things that people want to see.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There are a few that like to dig into the line items.
Sure.
You know who you are out there.
Which is great, yep.
And then, which is also good to ask the questions, those things, but it's those big ones, like positions, classhouses, and everything else that people are interested in.
Yeah.
Anything that's...
But I think that's where the rich discussion comes in, with these smaller groups, you know, at the PTOs and whatnot. Great, thank you. Dale Street project.
So, we received a call from MSBA, and they, we were originally scheduled to be on, was it February, Michael? The February meeting schedule, in which they accept everything for Module 1, and led us into the next phase of Module 2 of the process. We got a call, and they said that they had an opening in December, and did we want to do that? So we said, sure, and then they made it get us done quicker. So they put us into the December meeting, and the one thing that they asked us to do, which was in your packet, is to fill out Exhibit A, which is the feasibility study budget, based on $1 million. So again, it's great to have Tim Bonfati in town and on the permanent building committee. Michael and I called Tim, and we went through everything with him, and this was his recommendation as someone that does this every day for his job. So, what he put in for, and what we submitted to MSBA, owners, project manager, $230,000, designer, $650,000, environmental and site testing, $60,000, and then other, $60,000. And Tim felt strongly about the, putting the $60,000, the other, because it allows some flexibility during the process. If you don't have that there, MSBA, if you need to switch money, makes you go through a whole process, and by having the $60,000 other, that made sense. So, that's what we submitted to them, I did check with colleagues prior to submittal that are in the same place we are, in very similar allocations, so, I mean, not that I don't trust Tim, Tim's allocations, I'm sure are great, but just wanted to make sure that we were in the ballpark of other districts, and we are. So that was submitted to them, and then, so we'll go on the 12th, and, you know, typically what we do at that is, a member of the permanent building committee will go, a school committee chair will go, or designate, so you could designate someone, you know, Leo's on the building committee, a town official, so Christine Triola will go, Michael and I.
Okay.
So it's, that's typically what we do, it's a 10 o'clock meeting in Boston, and it's, gets us onto the next, the next stage of it. We've had to go a few times, we've gone for WeLog border a couple times, and we went to the initial meeting that got us into...
Right.
The whole process, so...
So I know some folks are curious in terms of when we start gathering public input for these focus groups that we had once...
Yeah, so we had planned on doing it in the fall.
Okay.
That was our original plan last spring, and then talking with Tim and other members of permanent building committee, they felt it would be better to do during the feasibility process study. So during, shoot, study process, during that time, it should be encompassed as part of that. So we have, Tim has some folks lined up that he uses in his projects that will be facilitating that.
Oh, good.
And, and we'll go through, but it'd be similar to like...
So that would be the fall?
No, we'll probably do it in the spring.
The spring, okay.
Yeah, because the feasibility will start right away.
And because there's a lot of unanswered questions, like which sites and things like that, the feasibility will flush out, you know, as part of that, the recommendation, so if you do it ahead of time, the next questions, we don't have answers to.
Well, yes, but there are people in the community who are just, like, when will that be?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yes.
So I think, you know, looking at different sites, that's something that we're going to talk to them about when they start the feasibility study, you know, I would think that you would look at the land in between Memorial and the current Dale Street, you look at land behind WeLog, you look at land at the former State Hospital, you look at, the town owns a lot of land, so we're in good shape with that, because other communities like, would need them with what they're doing, you know, they had to buy land first, and then, so we're not in that situation where we have town-owned land to do that, so.
Can't get our chickens on the way home anymore.
Exactly right. And it's a big school, too.
It's huge.
It's not little.
It's a big school.
Every time I drive by it, I think that is not little.
No.
Looks going to be cool. Wonderful, alrighty, donations, we have a few.
We have a few. So first donation, WeLog School, $78 donation to WeLog School gift account from WeLog PTO Angel Fund to support Plymouth Plantation and Rocky Woods Field Trips. Memorial School, $2,854.55 donation to Memorial gift account from Memorial PTO to purchase a variety of classroom items. I ask that you approve and accept those as written.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thanks, thank you to the PTOs for their support.
All right, superintendents' report to the committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so just looking at FY '20 budget update, so we are up to, I think we had our 12th budget meeting today, we're meeting with the department chairs and the principals, going over their individual budgets and their requests for staffing, et cetera. So we've gone through that, we have, I believe, about four more for the rest of the week, and then, as we're doing this, we're building the budget as we go forward. So, I think that, you know, one of the things that we were pretty clear about in the beginning with both leadership and department chairs, is that we weren't looking really to add any new positions this year, we're looking at, unless it was a critical need, that a program or school needed, or if they could really, if the principals or departments could really talk to us about the need in a way that makes it, makes it really something we need to have in the district. And we've added a lot of staff in the last few years, and the town has been very supportive of that, we've added a lot of guidance staff, programming, we feel pretty good about where we are, and we feel really fortunate for the support last year and the override, so we're looking at having a minimal increase this year, so that we can continue having a good relationship with the community and the town, and still doing what's best for kids. So, there hasn't been a lot of new positions so far requested, not like it has been the last couple of years, but we're going to go through that, finish up those meetings at the end of this week, work on it all next week, and then have a presentation for you on the 17th, I believe it is, to go through and have a number for you to start with. Also, I've been contacted by Mike Pastore, Chair of the Warrant Committee, so he would like to get together with our subcommittee just to have a conversation prior to that meeting on the 17th, they want to give a little bit of guidance around what their expectations are for the budget. I know that the annual doom and gloom meeting had a 7% increase with the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen, so I don't know if Mike wants to talk a little bit more about that, or wants to change that number, but he's requested a meeting, so I'm going to get back to him this week, and reach out to you guys that are on that committee to, subcommittee to have that meeting with Mike, and see what he was looking for. So, that's where we are, it's just a busy time going through and sitting through all those, I'm not getting a lot of steps on my Fitbit these days, just sitting through these meetings, and it's important to go through that, but it does take me out of the schools, which I don't really like very much, but, so that's where we are with that. As far as the director of facilities search, really pleased to announce that we've hired a new director of facilities that will be starting, Amy Collarin is our new director of facilities, she comes from Dedham as an assistant director of facilities over there, she's a graduate of Wentworth, and has a lot of experience with project management, and we're real happy to have her on board, she visited on Friday, and again, she'll be working with the town and the schools. So, we met with Mike Sullivan, and Michael and I, on Friday, and then she's ready to go, she lives in Walpole, so it's great, she's local, and it comes with great references from Dedham, so we're excited to have her on, on board.
Great.
And Michael's excited to have a director of facilities, because he's been doing that work for a while, so, he's very excited. So, we'll have Amy come in in a school committee meeting, introduce herself, and...
Perfect.
You know, certainly she can talk to a little bit about her experience and the many projects that she's been a part of, so we're happy to have her here.
Wonderful.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Future agenda items, FY '20 budget, Medfield 2021 update, superintendent goals...
And then agenda attachments, I put that on there, is that something?
Yes, thank you, and the minutes for November 5th.
Minutes, okay.
Thank you. Wonderful. Our next meeting is Monday, December 17th, and do we have any comments, closing comments? From you guys?
Nothing really, they all kind of talked about it. But we did, I want to mention that we did get over 2,100 cans for the can drive.
Well done.
We sorted and brought them all over, which was really good, we're really happy about that, and we have a lot of projects coming up, like the candy cane grams and stuff, coming up for the holidays.
Now, was that for Thanksgiving, too, for the Thanksgiving Day game, or is that in addition to that?
The can drive?
Yeah.
I'm pretty, I wasn't here for Thanksgiving, but I'm pretty positive people brought in cans when they came to the Thanksgiving game, so...
They did, but their hands were frozen to them when they dropped them in the box, that's good. So it's in addition, so it's the one that you did here, plus that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Well done, thank you. Any other comments, Peter, forgot?
I got, I said it all earlier in my speech.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what you said earlier about the student council, and everyone that was involved in the Angel Run, despite the rain and the gloom, it was at least warm enough, you know, and that was a great success, so kudos to you guys, and great for the community, too, so.
Kudos on the shirts this year, too, by the way, I always appreciate the long sleeve hat of Chris, so, I have to say. And yeah, it's always well-run, and the signage and whatnot, so, it's actually very good.
I mean, you can thank the community for the shirts, they picked the color of Medfield Day, so...
Excellent.
The Medfield Foundation, which are, right?
Yeah, so, I'm actually also like a member of the Medfield Foundation Youth Leaders, so I was involved with the Angel Run beyond just the student council.
Yeah, no, exactly, and that's another large chunk of students at the high school, right?
Yeah, probably 25 kids, I'd say.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, and there's also another, you have another purpose, that the community rallies the schools in it, and so the kids, you know, wear shirts, they're going to participate, and then bring it, my son's always very proud of that.
Yeah, Friday's pretty neat when they all have their shirts on, it's great.
Yeah, that's great. So, great job.
Thank you.
Malva?
Oh, me?
What's up, Jess?
I didn't, I didn't realize that, knew that that was a discussion as opposed to an announcement, yeah, actually, I have a few things. I wanted to thank the kindergarten parents for allowing me to go to their kindergarten task force meeting last week, and then I went to kindergarten night, which just, oh my gosh, it was just great, to kind of really hear how, and provide kind of a face to the school committee there, because, you know, their, their kids are in a much bigger class, and it's going to continue, so I think it's important that we kind of show who we are. And then, I actually wanted to mention that we do, again, have school committee office hours on December 14th at Dale this time, in the morning, we do rotate between evenings and mornings, but this one was just two mornings in a row. And that we had people come on, last Friday, when we did them as well, got some really nice input, so.
Very good.
It's great.
Don't forget the mindfulness, too, it's coming up at WeLog on the 14th as well.
What is that?
The mindfulness presentation, it's also, the 14th at WeLog, so...
Okay. Fantastic. I really enjoyed going to the school committee, Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference, a lot of great nuggets, fascinating, we are very, very fortunate here in Medfield, but I also learned a lot of great things, and took away a lot of nuggets that I'm still processing, and, so probably talk about that in the future. And I did want to thank the high school PTO, they sponsored, they, what's called the PTO Presents, and we had Eric Scott, the athletic director, speak, I think having these open communications between parents and either administrators or staff, it just breeds understanding, because I think many times there's a lot of misunderstanding, and I just thought that was a very fruitful conversation. Our next conversation is just about grades, weighted, unweighted, and sorting that out, and then to follow parent, teacher, student communications, and how best to move forward, and model communication for our children, essentially. So anyway, so, that's it.
Let me say a couple of things.
Yeah.
So I want to thank everyone that went to Medfield Talks earlier this, last week, we had a great group there, Jim McCollie from Riverside was there, and was very positive, and the feedback I got from parents was very positive, too, so thank the folks that are on the Medfield Talks Committee that organized that and helped us out with that. And then, just so you know, on Wednesday, our release day, we're having Synergy 911 come in again to do some training with our teachers, so this is, they'll be doing their locate, lockdown, leave, live program, which is the local ver, you always hear about Alice in the newspapers and everything, so this is a local version of what Alice is. And we've had, we had it two years ago, we had refresher in-house this last year, and this is the second time now we've had them come in. So we will be breaking up the staff into two different groups, and doing some different scenarios, and overviews, and those kinds of things, so, I think the feedback that teachers have given me have been very positive, they feel real good about the training, and they felt great about it last time, so we have new staff, and, you know, it's always good to get a refresher every couple of years on that, so...
So I remember that we had a discussion where all the training has traditionally been at the high school, but then the elementaries, the other schools have not had, have had trainings in their own building?
Right.
So is that being addressed?
So we're doing, secondary folks are going to be at Blake, and elementary people will be at WeLog.
Oh, good.
And then we'll rotate the next time around to a different elementary school, then back to the high school. It's just, they don't have the staff, and we don't have the time to do all at once, or the resources actually would be really expensive, so we have to do two schools, either one school or two schools right now, and that's how we'll do it, but...
I have one, one more thing to say, which is that I would not want to neglect thanking the Medfield Theater Society for such a fantastic Midsummer Night's Dream, it was engaging, my 10-year-old is sitting there absolutely enraptured, and I just love the idea that most of us will never get a chance to speak in the language of Shakespeare, in public, ever, and yet there was such amazing learning opportunity, and amazing, just opportunity to be able to grasp the language and the meaning, and to really dig into something that is not easy at this age. So I just have to say, I would be really remiss if I didn't praise that, so thank you, I had a lovely Sunday afternoon, I'm speaking to the...
Fantastic, thank you, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you for coming.